Okay, welcome everyone to regular city council meeting Tuesday, July 22nd. I'll do it with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Very good, next is the approval of minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dyke.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the council work session minutes of June 10th and July 8th, 2025, and regular meeting minutes of July 8th, 2025, as written.
Questions?
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we're gonna move on. Audience comments. Citizens may address their concerns to city council, please state your name and address for the recorded journal and please keep it to a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sean Bickley. Of course pronouns are he and him, and you can refer to me as Mr. B. Recently, my wife and I invested in some property on Cleveland Road, 1514, and we're fixing the property up to live there. We own property on Kirkwood, and we own property, of course, on Cleveland Road and on Juniper. There seems to be some discussion here recently on access to Juniper Road. There's talks of being able to access that. The road now has grass grown over top of it. For the last 50 years, it's been stoned. I'd like to go on record and just make sure that before any decisions are made that we could reach out to the property owners. At one point, I realized it was just easement, egress and ingress. However, now it's city property, I understand that. Also go on record that I'm willing to stone it, I'm also on record willing to pave it. On the east side of the road is owned almost exclusively by Mr. Steve West and myself and my wife. We want to have a say in this with council. Council's asked me to bring in deeds or past documentation of this road, which we're willing to do. But before any decisions are made, can we please have a meeting of the minds with everybody involved? And I greatly appreciate it.
Perfect.
Thank you. You got another minute left.
Hey, any of this work over here, you know, they're gonna need some pile driving for the new condos and stuff like that, so if you guys are going to release, you know, any of the work, Shepherd's Airline is in, we're helping in any way we can.
Thanks, Sean. Anyone else? All right, moving on to new business, we have resolution number 47-2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Artino.
I moved to waive the three reading rule and place resolution number 47-2025 on its first reading.
Questions on the three reading, roll call?
Yes.
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 Reader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of council, staff and guests in attendance and those watching from home. This is resolution number 47-2025. Resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal and enter into an agreement with Smith Paving and Excavating Inc. for professional construction services for sidewalk removal, replacement, and edge grinding relating to the City of Huron Sidewalk Maintenance Program, District Two, in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a culmination of the first zone that we inspected for trees and sidewalks. We went through, we sent out courtesy letters, some people made some repairs, we re-inspected, we sent out the first notice, some people fixed some issues, we went out, re-inspected. This is the final list. Tomorrow, final notices will be sent out to the residents, the ones who haven't done the work already. They'll have 30 days to complete that work. Any work that's not completed, we'll have Smith Paving come in and do the work on behalf of the city. Once that work is complete, we will invoice the residents from the city. Anyone who doesn't pay the city within 30 days of that invoice, those properties will be assessed over a four-year period for the work done.
District Two, is that Oklahoma?
Oklahoma.
Oklahoma. Yep.
The map in here with the blue streets, is that showing District Two? Goes all the way out to right there? The map in the packet?
No, that's three.
Got Bogart University, Somme Parkway. No sidewalks going out there.
It's just Oklahoma.
It's also showing Heron Heights and there's no sidewalks back there either.
I don't think about all the way out to Ribeats.
District Two, well, it's got Oklahoma, but it also has, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's it. That's a correct one.
Just, those other ones don't have sidewalks, those peripheral areas don't have sidewalks. Like all down here where you're neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, there's no sidewalks back in Heron Heights.
But what about Forest Hills and that's included?
Other questions, comments? Final adoption.
Yes.
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 Next, we have resolution number 48-2025. I'd like to waive the three reading rule and place resolution number 48-2025 on its first reading. Questions on the three reading, roll call? Yes.
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 Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is resolution number 48-2025. Resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal and enter into an agreement with Castaway Yacht Sales LLC for the purchase of a 2025 Alucan CW-750 marine patrol boat for the Huron Police Department in the amount of $167,500.
Chief Graham.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have a prepared statement first, and then a few comments that I would like to get on the record. As you all are aware, our marine patrol is a vital and very important component, not only to the police department, but for the safety of our citizens, visitors, and the boating community. Our marine patrol's been counted on multiple times for rescue operations and water emergencies throughout the years. Through educational boat inspections and patrols, our marine patrol program continues to keep our waterways in the city safe throughout the boating, fishing, and recreational seasons. Our current marine patrol boat is now over 26 years old, and we have outboard motors with around 3,500 hours, many of which are idling hours. Our boat has been out of service several times this year because the outboard motors have been non-functional and not reliable, which has resulted in very expensive repairs. I have contacted the state, ODNR, about obtaining new outboard motors, and there are not any available. I have researched some grant opportunities, and as we all know, grants are not a guarantee and they are very competitive. Depending on the size and the kind of outboard motors to purchase new motors could cost up to $100,000, of which is not included in the 2025 budget. I am so proud and honored and humbled to announce that an anonymous private donor has offered to purchase the Huron Police Department a brand-new 2025 marine patrol boat. The boat is an Alucan CW-750 aluminum utility boat with a centered enclosed cabin valued at $200,000. The boat is being sold through Castaway Yacht Sales in Port Clinton. After a large discount from Castaway Yacht Sales, the final purchase price is $167,500, of which the anonymous private donor has agreed to totally fund. This anonymous private donor does not want to be identified or recognized. This person highly recognizes the extreme value and importance of our marine patrol program and for our police department to be equipped with the newest and best equipment available to perform our duties to the best of our abilities. Additionally, the new marine patrol boat will be equipped with state-of-the-art electronics and communication systems. This donation will not affect our annual marine patrol grant as it will continue each year as the grant pays for overtime, maintenance, fuel, storage, and dockage. The current marine patrol boat will be taken out of service at the end of the season and eventually sold. I'm very excited to make this announcement, and I look forward to continuing to make our city waterways, waterways and beaches as safe and as enjoyable as possible through our marine patrol program. That concludes my prepared statement. I just would like the council to know that, yes, I know who the donor is. I met with the donor Friday, and I not only extended our thanks and appreciation on behalf of the police department, but also on behalf of city council and the City of Huron. And this person is very honored to help us out, and it couldn't have come at a better time. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Mr. Dyke.
I just want to say congratulations, and that's awesome, that's typical Huron stepping up, so thank you to whoever the person is, so thank you again.
I'll extend that, too. Mr. Higgy.
I just have an administrative question. We need to pass legislation in order to accept this gift.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, we don't, and my manager's report, I'll ask council for a motion to accept the gift, so it's on the record.
Anyone else?
I agree with the chief, it couldn't happen at a better time. We do have some concerns about where things are heading financially, so it's greatly appreciated.
My two cents, you know how I talk about the safety services and the chief has our support? And I sent the chief a letter to basically state that I know sometimes I say safety services, I, police department, people don't give them the respect and the due that they deserve. I also emphasize that there are a lot of people that stand behind you guys and know what your job is and respect what you do day in and day out. I can't help people having their own opinions. Very appreciative of this donor, like I said, it couldn't have come at a better time. We're already looking at engine issues. But yeah, and it just shows, like Mr. Dyke says, when people step up and they realize what a service you guys have given the city community, so kudos to you, your officers, and the whole department, and thank you to the anonymous donor.
Thank you.
Yeah, also, it's amazing, it's great, good timing. Do we know when the new boat will be able to go into service?
With striping, installing all our new radios and new lighting equipment, I would like to get it in this season. I'm all at the mercy of equipment arriving and getting installed and whatnot, so I'm not really sure yet. I'll definitely keep you updated.
Need to have a break a bottle on the bow or something before the end of the year.
Anything else for the chief? Final adoptions, thank you. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Very good. I guess I
still have to approve a purchase? We just did.
That was it. The donation will come later.
Yeah, for the donation. Next, we have ordinance number 2025-16.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bitticoe.
I move to waive the three reading rule and to place ordinance number 2025-16 on its first reading.
Questions on the three reading, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is ODOT consent legislation allowing pavement planing, repairs, and resurfacing of State Route 2 from SLM 7.72, State Route 4 interchange, to SLM 15.739, State Route 2, US 6, Rye Beach Road overlap within the City of Huron.
Very good, Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is our typical ODOT consent legislation. They're getting caught up on State Route 2 maintenance last couple of years, next couple of years. This, there's a small portion of this project that falls within the city limits. Most of that will be work on the bridge and the guardrails on our side over State Route 2 on Rye Beach Road. So this isn't a huge amount within our jurisdiction, but they still need our permission to go ahead and do the work.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this as an emergency measure.
Questions on the emergency, roll call?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Final adoption.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Good, next we have ordinance number 2025-17. Mr. Higgy.
I move that the three reading rule is waived and ordinance number 2025-17 be placed on its first reading.
Questions on the first reading, roll call?
Yes.
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 Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 2025-17, and ordinance, amending ordinance number 2024-58, adopted on December 18, 2024, to provide for supplemental appropriations from the general fund and other funding sources, and to provide for cash transfers.
Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This supplemental appropriation measure in total is $194,500. Primarily, $167,500 is for the police marine patrol boat referenced earlier. Those funds won't be expended until we fully receive the donation. Another $20,000 is being requested for the catch basin that broke on Laguna Drive. In the process of a crew being mobilized, we realized the storm crossing had collapsed across the road, and another catch basin was broke. As the crew was there, they quoted the job as an emergency under the limit for needing the bidding process, so we go forward with that. As an emergency, this will replenish that line. And then another $7,000 is being requested for natural gas. Looking at last year's invoices compared to this year, the rate has jumped 17% with Columbia Gas. I certainly don't think we anticipated that when budget was built. And lastly, a cash advance from the general fund of $25,000 to the Conagra TIF fund. The reason this is an advance and not a transfer is we fully anticipate this to be reimbursable as we proceed down the TIF process.
Very good. Most I've heard you speak.
Is that TIF, 25K, is that where that small section will land that we have to get cleared by the EPA?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, that's part of it, and we're also, as we finish up, going through the bric-a-bron, finalizing that TIF as well. We're just trying to capture these costs within the TIF fund now it's been legislated and created. And before this, we were paying for it out of the Economic Development Fund, which we won't be able to claim back, so now we're putting in this fund, we should start repaying.
And then just a quick question. How does natural gas increase affect the water department, fire department, streets? You know what I mean? How does that accounting work? Do they account for their own gas usage?
Yeah, the invoices are specific by address, and whichever department they specifically support, we try to keep track of them separately.
I get it, thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks, Isaac. Final adoption.
Yes.
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 Next, we have ordinance number 2025-18.
Mr. Mayor.
Reeves.
Make a motion placing ordinance number 2025-18 on its first reading.
Very good, questions on the first reading, roll call?
Yes.
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 Mr. Schrader.
Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 2025-18, an ordinance amending Title III Utilities under Part 9 Streets, Utilities, and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordinances of Huron, Ohio, to establish a new chapter 925 Huron Public Power Regulations and Rates.
Very good. Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This legislation will create a new chapter under utilities and a codified ordinances for HPP. This will bring it in line with how we manage our water rates and our water terms and conditions. We understand as a utility that was designed for economic development, any increase is painful on our customers. We do not take any increase lightly. As a reminder, we brought a third party in in 2024 to do a third-party rate study for us like we did with the water rates. The results that they brought back to us were not acceptable for us and we would not pass them on to our customers. They were way too aggressive. So we did an analysis in-house to see how far we could back those rates back down. This rate increase will cover the new debt we're bringing on for the third transformer and it will let us keep a moderate fund balance. And that's all that this increase is designed to do. We are not here to make money. We're here just to make sure that we can keep providing affordable electric service to our customers and as we grow, keep doing that. We will look at these rates every year. It'll be a living document. And as soon as we get to a point where we can drop these rates back down again, we will drop these rates back down again. Our job is to provide the cheapest electricity that we can for our customers. Outside of the rate increase, we added a small capital rider. We bill by kilowatt hours. The capital rider will be 0.0005 cents per kilowatt hour, so it's a very low charge. What that will let us do is put a small amount of capital fund. So as we do keep expanding and we have larger maintenance costs that we need to take care of, we can pay for it out of the capital fund. We also removed, it was a $650,000 cap. That was there. So if someone used $650,000 in distribution costs, not electric costs, just distribution costs, that they would be capped at that. Well, to do a rate increase and to cap a dedicated number negates any increase. So we've removed that. It's not with an intention to go over that rate and to keep climbing. It's just to have that flexibility as we need to maneuver and be a little agile that we do and we're not restricted by a ceiling. And then lastly, we added a $15 meter charge as we do in water, just to maintain the meters, replace them as we need to. Each meter is between $2,000 and $5,000. Currently, we pay for that and we don't recoup any of that. So we added a $15 service charge. If this passes all three readings, these rates will go into effect on September 1st. We have emailed all of our customers. There will be flyers in their next invoice. So we've tried to get it out there. We've let them know this three reading so they can come and have their say. So we've tried to get the information out there to be as transparent as we can. With that, I will happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Artino.
I just want to make sure for the record, these are commercial customers at the corporate park and I think one at the industrial park now.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. We only do commercial customers at this point. Ideally, at some point down the line, we would love to do a residence as well, but it's expensive to expand, so we'll do it slowly and as self-sustainingly as we possibly can.
Anyone else? Very good. Moving on to the city managers discussion. Mr. Hamilton.
Not fed up listening to me tonight yet?
No, I didn't say that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So donations. As you heard tonight, the city received or is in the mail, an anonymous donation for $167,500 for a new marine patrol boat. We would like to thank this donor on behalf of not just the city, but also our residents and the visitors that visit our city. This boat keeps them safe. It educates them on the water, not just now, but for years to come. This is huge for the city and we can't thank this donor enough. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept this donation.
Very good. I would like to make a motion on behalf of the city of Huron to accept the anonymous donation of $167,500 for the purchase of a new marine patrol boat. Questions on that motion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Very good. Thank you.
Long John Silver's Restaurant is finally open. We've had some good feedback on it. We wish them the best and much success in the future. Kids to Learn Fish Day, the city parts and rec department receive grant funding in the amount of $2,500 bucks from the White Men Weber Foundation to support its inaugural Kids Learn to Fish Day scheduled for Tuesday, August 12, 2025, at the new Dancing Water Pond Park located on Berlin Road. This event will provide 30 to 40 children with an engaging, hands-on fishing experience while also offering educational components about fishing techniques, water safety, and conservation. How is that full yet? Unfortunately, that is full, but we'll keep you posted if any openings come. Clock tower repairs. The east-west clocks have been repaired. The north-south ones, the motors have been sent away to be refurbished again, so those ones are to come. So if you get lost, go east-west, not north-south. Berlin Road property, the new sign that's on its way for the park. If the weather holds, a footer should be poured this week. An anticipation of the sign being installed next couple of weeks, hopefully. Safety services. Marine patrol boat, you heard about the donation. I just want to remind council, those funds will not be expended until we have the donation in hand and it's been properly accounted for. So the city is not out of pocket for that. But again, we cannot thank this donor enough. This is huge. We struggle every year to keep that boat in the water and keep it functional. We're such an important part of our policing, so. Finance, income tax through the end of June. Income tax receipts are still trending positively and we are approximately 13% higher than we were in 2024. Through the end of June, receipts totaled just over 2.6 million. We'll continue to monitor and keep council posted. Water department, our yearly hydrant flushing started yesterday, starting in the water plant and moving out east. This flushing process, it actually cleans our pipes out as we take the pressure out and build the pressure back up disturbs everything that's in the pipes. So our residents will see cloudy water, they will see drops in water pressure. We do this with as little problems and we try not to affect our residents too much, but this is critical to keeping our lines clean and safe. We'll keep updates coming on social media, so please check there if you're wondering where our guys are working. Any concerns or any questions, you can contact our superintendent, 419-433-9502. Streets department, as you heard earlier, when Mr. Phillips was doing the appropriations, we were working on the catch basin on Laguna. We pulled it out because it was collapsing. When we pulled it out and we went to clear some stuff out, the storm crossing, it collapsed in the middle and towards the far end. So our contractor gave us a price. We dug it up, replaced it in the catch basin on the other side. So that storm crossing is now back in operation. Lastly, upcoming meetings. We have utilities Wednesday, August 6 at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. And BZA Monday, July 14, 5:30 in the council chambers. Finance committee Tuesday, August 12 at 5:30 in the council chambers. There's a public hearing on Tuesday, August 12 at 6:30 in the council chambers for the rezoning application of OJD Holdings LLC from I-1 to B-3. There's a second public hearing on Tuesday, August 12 at 6:30 in the council chambers for ConAgra Development Concept Plan Approval. There's a council meeting Tuesday, August 12 at 6:30 in the council chambers. Planning Commission Wednesday, August 20 at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. And city council meeting Tuesday, August 26 at 6:30 in the council chambers. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Hamilton.
Mr. Dyke.
I have a question. Bring up Mr. West and Mr. Bickley's concerns over there when we speak to safety. I think we also need to think about the whole Maple Ave. There's numerous businesses, and I know one that has said something to me, Buckeye Sports Center, when they have drop-off and pickup, there is backup all the way to Cleveland Road and there's just not enough room for them and that's hurting their business as well as far as customers coming in. So I think when this goes back to the safety, we need to look at not only that area, but further out because there is some, I know we changed some of the routeways going down Deerwood and Buckeye during limited hours. So I think it's something that we should take into consideration and look at to see if we can come up with some type of solution. We know the schools have discussed trying to expand there, looking at options. We know it's going to be something more down the road, so we need to keep that in mind as well. So that's just one point I want to make.
And through you, Mr. Mayor. We have looked at this over the last couple of the years. We spend an awful lot of time dealing with those stub roads and Maple Ave and people wanting to use it and constructed and unconstructed. We actually had OHM give us an engineer's estimate for constructing it with utilities and everything else and it came in right around $4 million by the time we put sanitary and water in, all utilities and constructed a new road. So we are aware of it. We know the need eventually, especially if there's ever going to be a development up there, we will need to do it. It's just finding the right time for that big ticket item and fitting it in or figuring out where it fits in in our capital projects. It is on our radar.
Thank you.
I think sanitary is one of the big issues that would have come off Cleveland Road and that was. Anything else for Mr. Hamilton? Very good. Mayor's discussion, first I want to, we did have a safety committee meeting earlier on discussions. Thank Mr. Bickley for coming in, though late he didn't come in. So we are good to discuss that and carry on and we'll be included. Okay, so. And safety committees is open to the public, there's no invites, it's just open to the public, so. It's on the website when they are. And I appreciate everybody that comes in. Again, I can't express the appreciation on the new marine boat and the anonymous donor, so it just shows the service that the police department has given to the community and there's somebody that's really respected that, stepped up. So again, it could not come at a better time. Wishing the best to Long John Silver's. Any new business in town, they do well and prosper. Other than that, I just want to say the staff, we have a lot of stuff going on still. Always do. It gets busy and they do work very hard. All the committees, council members are on and the council people themselves doing what they do to make things run smoother. So I want to say I appreciate that. I will make a note, chief, that I think when you were talking about that boat and you mentioned the place it was coming from, Port Clinton. I think Mr. Greaves had a little tear in his eyes, so I'm not sure how that.
Top local.
Was gone, so. Other than that, August 12th is going to be really busy. A lot of meetings, public hearings all in the same day, so. Get ready for that. And that is all I have. Moving on for the good of the order, Mr. Haggy.
Yeah, I just have a question for Terry. Did we get a response to our invitation to our representatives? It's okay, it doesn't matter, they would have responded. So I would appreciate it if you would. I think that you get to a point where you're just making a point and I think the point is there is no representative government in Columbus. They won't even come and talk to a council, let alone reply to me when I call, but I don't blame them, I'm nobody. But I would like to continue to invite them and we'll see if we can wear them down. All right, that's all I had.
Very good. Mr. Greaves.
Nothing for the good of the order.
Dyke.
Thank you to the anonymous donor and have a great few weeks. That's all.
Good. Mr. Klaus.
Just also thanks again. Obviously, we can't say enough how excited we are about this new police boat donation and how important it is for our city and for the police department. Thank you again to the anonymous donor.
Mr. Artino.
Well, I already expressed how I feel about that anonymous donor. Very much appreciated. I think that also has a lot to say about how well-respected our police department is. And I think, I think all of our departments are, in my opinion, well-respected by our communities. Thanks again.
Good. Mr. Bittlecombe.
Thank you, staff, for all your hard work. Big thank you to Mr. Klaus and a huge thank you to all the staff and volunteers involved for helping make Huron River Fest a huge success again this year. I too like to thank the anonymous donor. I was contacted again about the state champion athlete signs as well as the flags over the Huron River Bridge. Like to keep those conversations going. I know there's been interest from other organizations to kind of spearhead those, but like, you know, people are still interested, so like to keep talking about that.
Yeah.
And then boat basin events coming up. Got this Wednesday Movie Herald and the Purple Crayon at dusk on July 23. Christmas in July with Rumors, 7:00 PM, July 26. OSU Alumni Band, 7:00 PM, July 27. Movie Wicked at dusk on July 30. All Classics Festival with the Divots at 7:00 PM on August 2. And Wind Jammers Band, 7:00 PM on August 3. Please come out and support our local events program, student athletes, and go Tigers.
Very good. When I said that, the flags, and we were talking to Grant Flower and he's reached out to the Lions Club, so that's in the process.
Yep.
Let everybody know that.
Yeah, I was just asked to bring it up again, so I would.
All right, well, we don't forget.
Yeah, I know.
Very good. Oh, Mr. Hamilton has one.
If I may, on to the recognition signs.
Right.
We've had a lot of emails float around on these. I've sent out a clear path forward for these to go ahead. There's not a whole lot else we can do at this point.
Yeah.
Someone, I need someone to actually start that process and follow the steps that were listed out to get anything moving. So someone just needs to pick this up.
And that's basically what I told the person who reached out, that I think the next step is the boosters need to start because I don't believe it's going to start at the school end. It's going to be the boosters who are going to have to push it. So I think that's the next step that that person was going to take.
Very good. Anything else? Very good. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bittlecombe.
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Questions? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Very good. Thank you, everyone.